Commissioner Andrea.
President.
President.
Commissioner.
Commissioner Reed.
Here.
Here.
Alright, we have everybody. So we will move to item three, which is the first of our public comment sections. This is for people to, members of the public who wish to speak. Does anyone wish to speak at this time? Okay, seeing none, we will close this public comment and move on to item four, approval of the agenda. Looking for a motion.
Mister Chair, I make a motion to approve the agenda.
May I do, Commissioner Reed? Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Alright, we have a motion by Commissioner Reed, a second by Commissioner Andriola. Any discussion? Alright, seeing none, may we please have a vote?
Aye.
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 Alright, motion passes unanimously. We will move on to item five, approval of the minutes. So we will start with the review and possible approval of the minutes of the July thirteenth, two thousand twenty-one Planning Commission Study Session. Looking for a motion.
Mister Chairman, I make a motion to approve the minutes as written.
Thank you. Any seconds?
I'll second that, Mister Chair.
Alright, we have a motion by Commissioner West, a second by Commissioner Kramer. Any discussion? Alright, seeing none, maybe please have a vote?
Aye.
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 Motion passes unanimously. So now, review and possible approval of the minutes of the July fifteenth, two thousand twenty-one Planning Commission Meeting. Looking for a motion.
Mister Chair, I move that we approve the minutes of the July fifteenth, two thousand twenty-one Planning Commission Meeting.
Alright, thank you. Any second?
I will second it.
Alright, we have a motion by Commissioner Kramer, second by Commissioner Rossin. Any discussion? Seeing none, may we please have a vote?
Aye.
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 Motion passes unanimously. We will now move on to our public hearing items, and the only one tonight is PCN eighteen dash zero 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 six. Is a request to amend the Kylie Ranch North tentative plan development handbook to allow multifamily in the arterial commercial land use area. So the exhibit here, outlined in blue, is the entirety of the eight hundred and seventy-four acre Kylie Ranch North property. So to give you a bit of context where we are, Pyramid Way is running along the western side of the property here. This is Sparks Boulevard as it turns into Highland Ranch Parkway. Northeast of Kylie Ranch North is the Pioneer Meadows Plan Development. Just north is the Lazy Five Regional Park and the Stonebrook Plan Development as we approach the city limits. And south of Kylie Ranch North is Kylie Ranch South. The original tentative handbook was approved for Kylie Ranch North by the City Council in two thousand and four. It's been amended since then. Most recently, twenty sixteen was an amendment where thirty-eight acres was added to the property to result in a total of eight hundred and seventy-four acres which exist today. And in twenty nineteen, land uses were amended, sort of as a cleanup measure, so that the tentative handbook would match the land uses called out in the comprehensive plan. So as you may recall, Kylie Ranch North is relatively unique in our plan developments in Sparks in that it was adopted through a tentative handbook, which has since been approved in phases. Apologies. The eleventh of those handbooks was before the Planning Commission last month. Forwarded a recommendation of approval to the City Council. We're still awaiting that item to be in front of the City Council later this month. So now that we're sort of acquainted with where we are here in the city, this is the approved land use plan as it was approved at the tentative handbook stage, most recently in twenty nineteen, again. So first things here, the green areas around the edges, as well as running through the linear park or ditch route here, are the open space areas of Kylie Ranch North. This area incorporates about twenty-one percent of the overall plan development. So to draw, get a little bit of context again, the bright blue sites are the school sites. Sky Ranch Middle School is on the east, Bow Hatch Elementary right there on the west. And so the bright, or the different shades of yellow throughout the plan development are various densities of residential villages. And as we move over here inward towards the Pyramid Corridor, we're crossing over into these mixed-use parcels here in the dark red. These bright red parcels are the community commercial properties. And the business park Phase Five is right up here. And so if you're familiar with this part of the city, this is the Bolimo facility right here. So that should give you an idea of kind of where we are, because a lot of this is still undeveloped, so. So as we move down towards this intersection of Sparks Boulevard, Highland Ranch Parkway, as it crosses Pyramid here, these brown properties are the arterial commercial properties, and those are the properties in question today in the request before you. So to elaborate, the current request is to add multifamily residential development as a permitted use in the arterial commercial land use areas throughout Kylie Ranch North. More specifically, there is a limitation on that request, and that is that multifamily would be limited to fifty percent of the overall arterial commercial area. So there are forty-two point zero six total arterial commercial acres in Kylie Ranch North, so only twenty-one point zero three of those acres would be allowed to be permitted multifamily residential development. So I'll draw your attention back to this again. This is the forty-two acres of arterial commercial. Twenty-one of those acres could be devoted to multifamily residential. Across Pyramid here, the four parcels that are adjacent that have frontage on Pyramid, these three community commercial parcels and the business park parcel here, these are properties where no residential development is permitted. And so with that, I do need to correct a typo in the staff report on page three, the first sentence of the analysis. There's a missing word in there, so it says that multifamily residential is allowed in business park and in community commercial. That's incorrect. The word "not" was omitted there. So multifamily residential is not permitted in business park or community commercial. So to clear that up, and also kind of give a little bit of more context about the twenty-one acres that would be allowed to be developed as multifamily over here would be sort of met with a contrast here just across the street where there will never, under the current regulations, be allowed any multifamily or other residential. Alright. So to amend a plan, a tentative plan development handbook requires the seven, following seven findings be made. Finding A, consistency with the objectives of a plan development. Since its adoption, the tentative handbook has envisioned neighborhood diversity, an emphasis on neighborhoods that would be complemented by varying levels of commercial and mixed-use development as stated in the approved tentative handbook. The current request is consistent with that goal by providing additional opportunities to develop multifamily housing. Finding B, whether there is a departure from approved densities, uses, or regulations. So the request does not depart from these established criteria except for the addition of twenty acres of multifamily residential development to the arterial commercial land use area. Densities and other applicable regulations are not changed in this request. Finding C, asks you to evaluate the ratio of residential to non-residential uses. Proposed amendment does not depart from the approved mix of uses. The twenty acres that with this request could be used for multifamily represent a three percent shift from four hundred and eight acres devoted to residential previously to now what would be four hundred and twenty-eight acres of residential. So that is, represents a total of three percent shift if you account for the total eight hundred and seventy-four acres of Kylie Ranch North overall. Finding D asks you to evaluate the effect on required open space. As I stated earlier, looking at the land use plan, twenty-one percent of Kylie Ranch North is devoted to open space. This includes one hundred and thirty-eight acres of park and other formal open space areas, as well as forty-seven acres of informal open space at neighborhood entries, streetscape landscaping, tree areas, trail networks, and project landscaping, so there's no change to this requirement. Finding E asks you to evaluate the effect on services, recreation, and visual enjoyment. No standards for individual projects or for subdivisions, et cetera, have been changed in this request. The network of parks and open space remains in effect for the recreation as well as visual enjoyment components of that finding. And there also remains a chapter devoted to requirements for infrastructure and services, including road design, water, sewer and storm drain, et cetera. Finding F asks you to evaluate the effect on relationship with the neighborhood overall. So neighborhood, obviously that's a relative term here. We're talking about a plan development that's eight hundred and seventy-four acres. So, one of the largest plan developments in Sparks. So as it was approved, it provides a diverse mix of housing options. Currently, that's not changing with this request, complemented by various commercial uses in open space areas. So each of those, again, has been approved prior to this request. And each of the plan developments, including Kylie Ranch South, Pioneer Meadows, and Stonebrook Plan Developments, which are adjacent to the Kylie Ranch North site, should have that shared vision for a mix of residential uses to be mixed with commercial and open space areas. So the current request would not impact that relationship. Finding G asks you to evaluate the public interest and reliance of residents and owners on the integrity of the plan. So prior to the current request, multifamily was not included in the approved uses in the arterial commercial area. The amendment brings a greater density of housing, which would provide a mix of land uses to the Pyramid Corridor and its future activity centers, so the amendment does not take away from owners and residents' reliance on the vision and integrity of the plan as stated. Rather, it adds additional diversity to the land use mix in an essential corridor of the city. On August fourth, staff published notice in the Reno Gazette Journal for the item. This is a public hearing. Also, staff sent out eleven hundred and thirty-three notices to property owners within Kylie Ranch North, as well as any property owner living or owning property within seven hundred and fifty feet of Kylie Ranch North. I also received one email with some commentary from a resident that has been provided to you prior to the start of the meeting this evening. Staff is recommending that the Planning Commission forward a recommendation of approval to the City Council. Applicant's representative is here as well, and I'll be glad to take your questions. Alright, thank you, Jonathan. Are there any questions for staff at this time?
I have a question.
Go ahead, Commissioner Reed.
Thank you, Chair. Jonathan, is there any financial difference going from commercial to multifamily?
There absolutely is. So Mister Chair, if I may, there are, included in your staff report packet was a full fiscal impact analysis, which staff required that the applicants provide, in determining what the change would be to the overall financial impacts to the city and provision of services and things like that, in changing those twenty-one acres to allow for multifamily. So what we produced in the staff report was, you know, that comparison that was sort of the ultimate findings of that report, which stated that there would be a deficit to the road fund but an overall surplus to the general fund, resulting in a roughly twenty million dollar surplus to the city over the course of twenty years, including the change before you this evening.
So it's a positive impact?
Overall, there's a positive impact to the general fund, a deficit to the road fund, but it overall washes out to be a twenty million dollar surplus to the general fund.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, any other questions? Commissioner Carey.
Thank you, Mister Chair. And I just had a technical question. We didn't get a chance to bring this up at study session, but I was curious about the required findings we have to make tonight. I know this isn't the first tentative handbook that we've looked at, and so it kind of caught me by surprise. We were looking at PDF, and that's kind of the effect on the neighborhood. But am I, am I correct in assuming that one of the required findings isn't, isn't, is not having to do with how the proposed handbook is consistent or compatible with our comprehensive plan as a city?
One of the specific findings for amendment of a tentative handbook is, was not necessarily to find those, the conformance issues with the comprehensive plan, but to find whether those changes would affect the integrity of the plan as it was understood by any property owner.
Okay, so are we supposed to just kind of look more internal for the plan development, plan handbook development? Or is it kind of more of the citywide?
I'm afraid I don't understand the question.
Yeah, I guess, I guess where I was going with this was, so PDF, it's looking at the effect of the neighborhood, and you're saying with that required finding, it's basically surrounding land uses. It's not really how it affects the city's comprehensive plan.
Correct.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure I understood. It seemed a little different to me, but I appreciate that explanation. Thank you, Mister Chair.
Any other questions? Alright, seeing none. Would the applicant like to make a statement at this time?
Good evening. For the record, Mike Crayla Christie Corporation, representing Rising Tides LLC and KM Two Development. I think Jonathan did a very thorough job in his staff report, and we're just here to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions for the applicant? Commissioner Carey.
Thank you, Mister Chair. Mike, when we looked at the, last year, this commission looked at a master plan amendment for the nearby Five Ridges development. And one of the master plan amendments that we looked at was removing the commercial in that development. And one of the supporting justifications for why it was approved was because there was nearby commercial availability in Kylie Ranch North. I was just kind of curious, in your opinion, if the proposed handbook amendment goes through and we reduce the arterial commercial land use basically in half by allowing multifamily, would there be enough commercial to serve Kylie Ranch North and the Five Ridges and the rest of the nearby area?
Yes, that's a good question. In fact, if you look at, if, Jonathan, if you can put the map back up, there is a significant amount of commercial land use in Kylie Ranch. So basically, everything that you see there in the bright red is community commercial, which is our most intense commercial district. That, and not only is that an intense commercial district, we have minimum floor area ratios that we have to maintain in there that, which were actually raised when we did the last handbook amendment to make sure that happens. As far as the arterial commercial on the west side of Pyramid, the majority of that is already spoken for. Some of it's actually already been approved. For example, there's going to be a Maverick at the corner of Pyramid and Highland Ranch Parkway. That's already gone through the approval process and will break ground here in the near future, as well as there's commercial pieces there that are under contract that are moving forward right now. So if you look at really the piece, which is actually plays into the next item on your agenda, the five acre parcel there, that is highly restricted in terms of access. We cannot get access to that parcel from Pyramid Highway, and essentially gets a right-in, right-out off Sparks Boulevard. So it's not real appealing for a commercial use just based on that access. And I think if you look at, for example, the C-two zoning code, which would be the equivalent zone in the municipal code, that allows for multifamily as well. So I think there's definitely plenty of commercial that will be coming, and the handbook assures that there'll be a good balance with those minimum FAR requirements. And so I think it's, it really does not affect the overall balance to the, to the plan.
Thank you, Mike. Thank you, Mister Chair.
Thank you. Any other questions for the applicant? Alright, seeing none. Thank you. Alright, so this is a public hearing item, so now we will open public comment. So any member of the public who wishes to speak may do so now. We do ask that you fill out one of the forms that's out in the lobby before speaking and turn it in to the secretary. But we will now open public comment. So are there any members of the public who wish to speak on this item? Oh, you have cards. Yeah, you can fill it out afterwards. As long as, as long as it gets done, it's fine. You can, you can come up. And just- And please just state your name for the record, and then go ahead.
My name is Morgan Liddick. I live in Highland Ranch. Thank you for the invitation to come down here and talk to you about this. I see three potential problems with this development, and they are: increased traffic, pressure on transportation infrastructure, to a degree that that extra one million dollars a year you're going to get won't cover it. In other places, it hasn't done itself. I live in these places. Increased impact on the environment, especially water usage and sewage. Also, non-point pollution into the trucking drain. Anyone want to look at it in the report? Probably ought to think about it. Third, impact of higher density on existing property values in the area. There are a lot of studies on this kind of thing, both here and oddly from Australia. They indicate that within seven miles of an urban center, property values of existing homes decline from point five to as much as seven percent when new multifamily buildings are built nearby. I've cited this information in my written response to you. So that's something to think about. Not only does it affect personal owners, it also affects the tax revenues that you're all expecting in this project. Overall, there's also a question of where this whole business is going to lead, given the theoretical maximum cited in the report you have before you of fifty-nine sixty-nine housing units instead of the forty-one hundred and change that are used in these calculations. I would urge the Planning Commission to do a study of the impact of the highest number allowed before deciding to proceed, because that's where you're going. And you might want to make a decision about whether you want to put your foot on that slope before you decide. Pump the brakes, ladies and gentlemen. Pump the brakes. Have another look. That's all from me. Thanks for the opportunity, and I will follow up the board. Thanks.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the public who wish to speak on this item?
My name is Dan Pelton, and I- Yeah, for, for the public record. Is this good enough? Alright. So my name's Dan Pelton. I too live at Kylie Ranch. Morgan pretty much brought up eighty percent of what I was going to say, so I second that with the property values and the crime and just everything like that. But that's, it's pretty much it. I don't have much more to say, what he just said. So I just wanted to second that as far as. And one more thing, a couple of years ago, when we bought our parcel of land, we were in the understanding that it was just going to be the master planned community with just the homes and everything, as well as some commercial growth. We did realize, at least no one at Lennar knew if they did tell us as I asked about the multifamily living coming, possibly being built. So that was the concern when we got this letter, so. I thank you.
Thank you. Any other members of the public wish to make comment at this time? Okay, seeing none, then we will close public comment. So any further discussion? Commissioner Carey.
Thank you, Mister Chair. I had a couple of questions for staff. My first question is, Jonathan, how does the proposed handbook amendment support the goals and policy of the city's overall comprehensive plan? Specifically, what I'm talking about is policy MG three of our comprehensive plan that we spent a lot of time on last summer, which talks about maintaining an adequate supply of land and employment generating uses.
The specifics of the way that this amendment would impact that is that, first of all, there's no increase to the number of residential units. So while some of the arterial commercial space could be used for multifamily, we've, you know, gone too lengths with the applicant to make sure that that be sort of mitigated by, you know, a limitation to that, to that growth, as well as, you know, the, again, the emphasis on the contrast that we have in the other, you know, commercial emphasized areas here. We do believe that there are other comprehensive plan goals that this, this supports as well. There's, you know, we're providing a greater diversity of housing, et cetera. So there are goals and policies that are met by the, by the request. But then again, I think that there's the ones, you know, the one that you're mentioning requires that explanation, but we do feel that it, you know, still provides that level of security in the idea of, you know, being adequate commercial space.
Thank you for that. I was curious about finding PD three, and that talks about the ratio of residential to non-residential land uses. I understand this is a handbook amendment. We're looking at permitting a new use within the AC land use area. But I think if by permitting that use has the potential to take up some of that commercial area, so it's, it's a land use sort of issue. And so I think in the staff report, there was a breakdown mentioned that the overall ratio was forty-nine percent residential to fifty-one percent non-residential. I was just kind of curious to just, to look at the extent of this proposed handbook amendment, how that has, and the impact that it has on the overall ratio. I was just curious if you were to take that fifty-one percent non-residential, which I assume includes the business park, the other commercial areas, open space, parks. I'm curious if you take out the, the open space and parks, which in the staff report was like, something like twenty-one percent of the overall. I was just curious how much the percentage of the commercial uses that we would be, that the city would be potentially losing by this proposed handbook amendment. What does that do to the overall ratio if you take out open space?
Mister Chair, if I may, I have some numbers that I'll try to convey adequately here. So if we remove the hundred and eighty-five acres of open space to reduce the total eight hundred and seventy-four acre site down to six hundred and eighty-nine acres, then residential acreage at four twenty-eight would represent just over sixty percent. The non-residential minus open space would become two hundred and sixty-five. So out of that new hypothetical total of six hundred and eighty-nine without the open space, the ratio would be just under forty percent. So without open space as a factor in the equation, residential would represent about sixty percent, non-residential about forty percent.
Okay, so makes sixty, forty is what it, is what the ratio comes out to be.
Roughly.
And so we're kind of decreasing that from fifty-one percent to roughly forty percent when you take out open space. So it's, that just kind of shows the extent of, of what it is. And then Mister Chair, if I may, my last question. So the staff report states that the proposed amendment would only apply to half of the AC land uses. And in the presentation, you talked about it's forty-two acres of, of AC areas. And then so twenty-one could be, potentially be developed as, as, as multifamily. What would be, what are some of the, the caps? Or what are some of the ways that would, that would kind of stop that multifamily from taking up all of that, that AC area within, within the handbook?
Aside from, Mister Chair, if I may, aside from the fifty percent maximum that we, that you mentioned? You know, the theoretical limitations on that, I mean, I think are inherent in that restriction, which is written into this proposal, that there would be no more than fifty percent of that land devoted to that. Some, some other, you know, factors here that are going to limit, you know, a property owner's or a developer's, you know, ability to do that would be the unit maximums that are established. Again, as was mentioned a moment ago, in public comment, there is a forty-one hundred ninety-eight unit maximum, which was analyzed in the fiscal impact analysis. And we pointed out in the staff report that one unit beyond that would require that fiscal be updated so that the impacts would be known. But the total unit counts don't change no matter if each, if these twenty acres are developed entirely with multifamily and if that, you know, hypothetical number of units was achieved on those properties, it would count against what could be developed in the other phases, other villages. So there's some sort of inherent limitations on what would be built, or what would be desired, or have the appetite in the development community there. So, and again, the contrast still exists on the Pyramid Corridor there, that there's a hundred and ten acres of, of frontage along Pyramid that does not allow residential development. So the impacts there, I think, are mitigated by that contrast.
Okay, thank you, Jonathan. Thank you, Mister Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Carey. Any other discussion or questions? Okay, seeing none, then I will entertain a motion.
Okay, I guess I'm making the motion. I move to forward to the City Council a recommendation to approve amendments to the tentative development handbook for the Kylie Ranch North Plan Development associated with PCN eighteen dash zero 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 six, adopting- adopting findings PDA through PDG and the facts supporting these findings as set forth in the staff report.
All right, do we have a second?
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Reed, a second by Commissioner Andriola. Any final discussion? Mr. Carey.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I like how everyone just kind of looked, looked down this way. That's kind of funny. You probably knew I was going to have some stuff to say on this.
I looked that way first, to be fair.
Okay, thank you. You know, I don't think it's a big surprise to anyone on this commission, you know, I've been very vocal since I've been in this position that I want to make sure that we're maintaining an adequate balance between jobs and houses. I think that's, you know, as a region and as a city and as a state, and really as a nation, just looking at the vehicle mile traveled projections, I don't think we've been doing a very good job of controlling land use and connecting it with transportation and maintaining that jobs to house balance. And so at face value, when I looked at this project, I was very concerned about the impact that this would have on policy MG three. And it's always a hard pill to swallow whenever we're looking at any sort of land use decision or zoning decision, which we're changing the land use, or giving up commercial or employment generating land uses that would be for residential. I certainly understand the housing market's insane. We have an affordable housing crisis going on right now, but from an overall comprehensive land perspective and for the city's financial future, it's very important that we maintain these, these, these commercial areas and employment generating areas. I want to thank our staff and our finance director for working with the applicant on this, on this proposal. I believe there was a lot of give and take on this, and I'm feeling optimistic, cautiously optimistic, that this proposed handbook change will not greatly negatively affect the overall vision for Kylie Ranch North and the city's comprehensive plan. I'm very concerned about the impact of losing any commercial areas and employment areas, but I think with respect to this particular one, we're just looking at the five acre portion on the southeast corner of Pyramid and Sparks. I'm confident with the cap on the overall units and the cap on fifty percent of the AC areas that we will still be able to achieve the overall vision in terms of employment and commercial land uses that was envisioned, and that's in our comprehensive plan, and quite frankly, the city's financial future depends on it. And I'll just kind of make one last historical point. You know, the reason, and it was several decades in the making why the city debated about really annexing and holding off on annexing the Spanish Springs Valley. When the city annexed, made that decision to move into the, into the Spanish Springs Valley, they did so in order to not just be a bedroom community to, for, for the region. And I think there's plenty of room to grow, and we're really depending upon, as a city, to maintain these land use, uses that generate commercial taxes and that they generate employment uses. And I think it's, it's critical moving forward that we maintain and achieve that, that, that goal of MG three in the comprehensive plan. So I will be supporting the motion, but I wanted to put that out there on the record and hope we can keep, keep the vision going.
Thank you, Commissioner Carey. Any other discussion? Commissioner West.
Yes, I'm, I'm looking at this and honestly, I mean, I appreciate your comments, Commissioner Carey, but I'm not convinced that we're only looking at just the five acres, because obviously we're looking at changing, you know, possible land use for twenty acres. And to me, I, you know, I can see why that five acres may, may not work out as commercial due to access, traffic issues and such. But I also believe that, you know, there's some major corridors that we have here. We have major transportation routes, and to continue, you know, some of these transportation routes just, you know, being aligned with additional housing, which again, yes, I agree, we need more housing. Multifamily is an important product out there, but I see Pyramid Highway in particular as, as a valuable, you know, arterial, you know, roadway that really is built more, you know, to support the commercial type of development. And for those reasons, I'm actually going to have to vote no to this request.
Thank you, Commissioner West. Any other discussion?
I just wanted to say that I, I agree with a lot of Commissioner Carey's concerns. In the relatively brief time I've been on this commission, just since the fall of 2019, I know that we've been asked to change at least three times commercial land to residential. And I, again, I agree with Commissioner Carey that I think we need to probably be a little better about protecting commercial land. On the other hand, as Commissioner Carey and Commissioner West have said, we have a really terrible housing crisis right now, and I, I think that adding some more affordable housing in the end is going to be good for the community, and I, I am going to agree with staff, and I will be supporting this motion.
All right, so anyone else want to say anything? All right, so we have a motion by, I cannot remember who anymore. I think it was Commissioner Reed and seconded by Commissioner Andriola. So maybe please have a vote.
Mr. Kramer.
Aye.
Mr. West?
Nay.
Mr. Andriola?
Aye.
Mr. Carey?
Aye.
Mr. Kramer?
Aye.
Mr. Roth.
Aye.
Mr. Reed?
Aye.
All right, motion passes with Commissioner West voting nay. So we will now move on to general business, and our general business item tonight is PCN twenty-one dash zero 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 six, and I think that's also you, Jonathan.
Good evening, Mr. Chair. Planning Commissioners, Jonathan Cummins from the Planning Division. This is a request for the approval of a final plan development handbook for Kylie Ranch North Phase Ten. Again, the area outlined in blue is the entirety of the eight-hundred-and-seventy-four acre Kylie Ranch North Plan Development. Quick reference points again, we're just west of the Pioneer Meadows Plan Development, just south of Lazy Five Regional Park and Stone Brook Pyramid Way running along this western edge of the property. Across the parcel in question, the Phase Ten area is outlined here in red, and this is at the intersection of where Sparks Boulevard turns into Highland Ranch Parkway. And down here, this southeastern boundary is formed by Kylie Parkway. Again, the original tentative handbook for Kylie Ranch North was approved by the council in two thousand and four. The Phase Ten handbook would govern the areas outlined in the tentative handbook as villages twenty-nine A, twenty-nine B, and thirty. The property is twenty-nine point three-three acres in total. Twenty point nine-three of those acres would be designated as mixed use, and five acres of that would be designated arterial commercial. Three point four acres would be designated as open space. So if I come back to this colorful image here, you see the open space has, again, followed the path of what will eventually become a linear park style open space use. So the majority of the site is designated mixed use. These are the properties in dark red here. So the quick rundown of the residential versus commercial allowances for the land use in the mixed use area, the residential density requires a range of eight to twenty-three point nine dwelling units per acre, as was approved in the tentative handbook. In order to achieve that density, various multifamily residential uses would be permitted, including apartments, townhomes, condominiums, assisted living facilities, and so on. A point worth making here is that single-family residential is not permitted in the mixed use area. Again, all the different shades of yellow are where it's single-family housing is permitted. So moving on to the commercial side of the mixed use category, these are some of the lists, some of the uses that I wanted to list out for you that are allowed in the mixed use area. These are uses permitted by right. So it includes things like offices, gyms, retail stores, which would include grocery stores, convenience stores, medical offices, personal services, restaurants, and restricted gaming. Here's the uses allowed in that land use category through a conditional use permit, and that would include drive-through facilities, lodging of less than two hundred rooms, manufacturing facilities, churches, and civic facilities. So switching gears to the arterial commercial part of this phase, uses allowed by right in arterial commercial would include bars, fast food restaurants with drive-throughs, home improvement centers, hardware stores, liquor stores, convenience stores, gas stations, mini storage facilities. Again, these were approved uses in that land use category in the tentative handbook. And a little bit more background, through conditional use permit, the following uses would be allowed in the arterial commercial area that include department stores, wholesale stores, entertainment venues such as bowling alleys or movie theaters, and lodging of more than two hundred rooms. So these are the criteria outlined in the Sparks Municipal Code required to establish whether a proposed final handbook is in substantial conformance with an approved tentative handbook. Items one and two ask you to evaluate whether the proposed final handbook varies residential density or proposed ratio of residential to non-residential uses. The final handbook proposes standards related to these two criteria that would mirror what was already approved in the tentative handbook. The density does not change, uses and ratio of uses remain the same, mixed use and AC areas here are designations that have been taken directly from the approved tentative Item number three, proposed final handbook must not involve a reduction of open space. The open space proposed in Phase Ten would be three point four acres, as was established in the tentative handbook when it was last amended. No change is proposed there. Items four and five, proposed final handbook must not substantially increase the floor area for non-residential use, nor substantially increase ground areas for or heights of buildings. So there's no increase to these or any other development standards proposed in this final handbook. Again, those remain identical to what's approved in the tentative handbook. Staff believes the requested final handbook meets each of these criteria for establishing compliance with a tentative handbook and recommends Planning Commission forward a recommendation of approval to the City Council. The applicant's representative is here tonight, and I will be glad to take your questions.
Thank you, Jonathan. Any questions for staff at this time? Okay, seeing none, the applicant like to make a statement.
Good evening, once again, Mike Raely with Christie Corporation, just here to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions for the applicant? Commissioner Carey.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mike, what does the handbook envision for the, for this phase, for this Phase Ten? Does the handbook language, and I got a little lost in, in it, to be, to be honest with you, but would, is the vision more of kind of a single-use multifamily sort of a development, or would there be, you know, would there be truly mixed, mixed use development, or would there be supporting commercial and, and multifamily? And the, I'll follow up on another one, but-
Sure. The handbook itself does not limit or require any, you know, it obviously allows for all the uses. I will tell you in full transparency, there is a plan to come forward with an administrative review for kind of a resort-style apartment complex on the northern portion, so essentially villages twenty-nine B and twenty-nine A as shown on this plan north of the, or just linear park. And then the, the southern portion could, is to be determined at this point.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate the transparency on that. My follow-up was, how would the required minimum floor area ratio of point two affect what types of development we would, we might see on, within this phase?
So on point two, I mean, you could see, for example, our office is located in the MU district, just further down Kylie Ranch Parkway. You could see some office-type uses in the mixed use. Assisted living is another one that we've had developed already in, in mixed use within Kylie Ranch North, so those types of uses.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Carey. Any other questions for the applicant? Okay, seeing none, any discussion? Okay, seeing none, I will entertain a motion. Go ahead.
I moved forward a recommendation of approval to the City Council of PCN twenty-one dash zero 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 six as the Kylie Ranch North Phase Ten Final Development Handbook is in substantial compliance with the Kylie Ranch North Tentative Development Handbook as set forth in the staff report.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Kramer. Any second?
I'll second the motion.
All right, so we have a motion by Commissioner Kramer, a second by Commissioner Reed. Any final discussion? All right, seeing none, Madam Secretary, may we please have a vote?
Commissioner Douglas?
Aye.
Commissioner Andriola?
Aye.
Commissioner Kramer?
Aye.
Commissioner Roth.
Aye.
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 Motion passes unanimously. Thanks, Jonathan.
You're welcome.
All right, we will move on to item eight, which is our final public comment section. This is for public comment for items that do not appear on the agenda. Do any members of the public wish to make comment at this time? All right, seeing none, I will close public comment and move on to item nine, announcements from staff and commissioners. We'll start with staff. Any announcements?
Not necessarily any in particular. I didn't prepare to give the council update because of our study session was skipped, so I can provide that at our next meeting, Commissioner, or Chair, because it wasn't on my radar.
Fair enough. All right, any announcements from commissioners? Commissioner Carey.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I had three. I first wanted to congratulate Commissioner Reed on a successful year as our Chair of Regional Planning Commission. I think he did a great job over the past year and represented the city well in what was a pretty challenging year overall, but the first year of the implementation of the regional plan, so kudos to Commissioner Reed. I also wanted to announce to the commission that the Nevada State Planning Conference is going to be held in Reno, October eighteenth through the twentieth. Registration, we're hoping to get up by next week, so keep an eye out for that, but it's in Reno, so I think it's a great opportunity for some training. There's going to be some really good sessions this year, and, and I'm not sure in terms of the schedule if we're going to be having a second meeting in October, but if we are, it would be good to not have a study session on that Tuesday, October nineteenth, just to avoid, to allow everyone an opportunity to attend that, that conference. And lastly, I just wanted to throw out there, maybe at our next meeting or a future agenda, I'd like to see an opportunity, it could be study session or a regular meeting, but a, but a training session for, for this body. I think in, in particular, it would be good for us all to get some training on the open meeting law and ethics. I, I don't know if Commissioner Reed was on, was on the commission last time we had that, but it's been several years. It was Doug Thornley kind of gave a really good PowerPoint presentation, but I think that would be good with all the new faces on this, and maybe as part of that same training, an opportunity to, or just a review of, of our rules and procedures, just to get us on board with that. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Carey. Any other announcements?
Mr. Chair, in terms of September, we do anticipate having a meeting, the first meeting in September, but not the third, or the second meeting, which would be the third week of September. We, we will not be having a meeting, a second meeting in September.
All right, thanks for that, Jim. All right, so we will move on to item ten, which is adjournment. Can I get a motion?
Look to adjourn.
Second.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Kramer, a second by Commissioner Reed. Can we please have a vote?
Commissioner Douglas?
Aye.
Aye.
Commissioner Andriola?
Aye.
Commissioner Carey?
Aye.
Commissioner Kramer? Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes, we are adjourned.